Pledge of allegiance, we all remain standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This year, we've had many tragedies. One of the tragedies occurred in the country with a tragic accident. We've had four hurricanes, and I believe in forty-five days now, maybe fifty days, and I don't know if that other one's counted in that that's out there that already hit us. There's been mass shootings in Las Vegas. Getting closer to home, we've had members of our staff to have lost loved ones recently. And recently, we did lose a staff member, one of our team members, our chief of police Jeff Weiss-Gerber. And I would ask that we have a moment of silence sharing our thoughts and prayers to the families that are suffering from this tragic loss throughout our country, and most recently Chief Weiss-Gerber and other staff members. Thank you. Today is October tenth.
Basil, Meyer, here.
Here.
Missouri, here.
Here.
Please.
Here.
There are no minutes standing to be approved, they'll be at the next board meeting. Anyone from the audience wish to address the board? The village commissions, beautification commission?
Tonight's meeting was scheduled, and they decided not to have it. I would imagine it will be taking place a month from now. The Paul Loman Memorial Bench has been put together, and it's at the park. Just waiting for the plaque for them to decide what's going to be said on it. That's all I have to report on that.
Fourth of July Commission, trustee.
I don't have the final file numbers yet. We actually wound up at the end at the moment. I think it's going to be, make actually a little bit of a profit, a little ahead of what we thought, around a little under $6,000. We went over on some things, but we got some extra sponsor money, and we went under on some other things. So, all in all, not a fantastic year, but we did a little better than breaking even with the money we spent in the park.
That's the thing, the festival made more money, we just spent some.
We spent in the park, exactly. And like I says, that's not a final, but I think that's about what we're going to turn out.
Right, our budget is on October first year, remember?
Yes, we start off October first. So I got everything in from the prior last year.
So I think you have a commission meeting soon, you will consider a budget, so you can get a hold of the chair and speak.
Yep, and that's all I got to report.
Thank you, youth commission trustee.
The night at the forest preserve a few weeks back turned out to be really good. About fifty kids attended, so that was decent. Still with truck or treat not happening, so in lieu of that, youth commission has decided to sponsor the Beecher High School Student Council Haunted Hallway by paying for entry for the VES students. And then the other event they have going on is this Friday is the haunted house that they're taking the junior high kids to, and they're meeting at the junior high for that.
Is the quick kind of truck or treat may still happen with the Chamber of Commerce and Lions Club?
Yes, it's just going to be a different date.
Yeah, I didn't know if you were aware of that, Stacy, that's why it's a fun.
Yeah, I was actually kind of happy that it's going to happen.
Just came from a chamber meeting, I don't think so.
No?
Okay. I'm gonna get off.
Maybe, maybe not.
There is a truck or treat in the country at Saint Paul's Church and Church Road, Saturday before Halloween, if I remember right.
Correct, and if I understand correctly, youth commission is also going to kind of donate to that. They're going to have a trunk and so much candy for that as well. So that's all I have to report.
Ribbon of Hope, I can do French report. The Ribbon of Hope Memorial is almost completed. The benches haven't been installed, the plates are going to be installed. Tentatively, him and I are doing landscaping tomorrow unless we get put it out, which I think we will, in which case we'll schedule another day. And he's hoping for a commemoration still this year, possibly before the fall, well, later this fall. So we're proceeding with that, and hopefully that'll close the books on that. They start preservation, trustee.
Yes, so our next meeting is next Wednesday, October eighteenth at 6:00 PM down at the depot. I think I reported that our new sign is up, it's installed, it's being used, so it looks nice if you're down in the area, take a look at it. We're also working on our next six plaque recipients, so we're going to do that as well. So that ends my report.
Marcy.
Where am I? The treasurer's report?
Okay, the village accounts, the total of the village accounts is $2,759,367.94. The total of the commission accounts is $196,024.22. For a total of all accounts, $2,955,392.16. The general account total, $1,052,403.50, which puts us at the point that we were looking to be. The commission and non-AP payments, I have a slight revision to that total. The total now is $216,194.49. The reason there's a slight revision is the very first entry for Fourth of July was not included in the original total. And that ends my report.
I'd like to make a motion approving treasurer's report and refer to financial activity for September.
So motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second to the motion, any questions? Roll call.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kupfer?
Yes.
Valen?
Yes.
Variance reports are enclosed for your review. And then the approval of bills from what you had seen in the email, there's a few extras that were added before today. Becker's Automotive, Bellson Steel, Call One, College of DuPage, Constellation Energy, Decaf, daycap, Decaf, Goldie's Autobody, Hawkins, JCM Uniforms, Thomas Knute, law firm, Motorola Starcom, Village of Peaton. And it looks a little like a valet. So I'd like to make a motion for the approval of bills for September for a total of $183,903.32.
Motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second to the motion, any questions?
What's the annual license fee for playing music in the park, what's that?
We have to pay, because we have live entertainment in the park, we have to pay a fee to ASCO or wherever it is for the right to play pop and rated music in the park. So the village picks that up for all entities that play music in the park, whether it's Beach Rec, the Lions, the Fourth of July, the church picklins. If there is an audio recording that's playing in a public place, you have to have a license fee. It's kind of ridiculous, but that's the law. Any other questions?
I have no more. The wall's refund, when's that up, 2019?
Actually, it's up in 2020, about a fourth quarter of 2020, which will be dated April of 2021. So we will have to budget for that through our fiscal year coming to come. And then in fiscal year coming in '22, that money refunds available.
Okay, and when, now, and this is way before, me, me and I lived here in '99 when it happened. When the business got sold, did that go with?
Yes.
Okay. Was that renegotiated, did it just get, you buy the business, you get this agreement with it?
It was the village attorney's opinion that it went with Canadian Country Corner Inc., which still exists as a corporate entity, under walls, umbrella.
Okay.
As a limited liability corporation. Not the best deal in the world that we made at the time, what, that was what, twenty years ago now, different times. That's when Canus were only getting a couple thousand a quarter.
Well, and I, in '99, I understand it was a local business that was locally owned and.
And expanded.
Now, we have a chain that, I mean, there's one grocery store in town, I doubt they're hurting for.
Yeah, the old.
I don't know, the time I see plenty of people there.
The old argument was to be given half of the total, or 100% of the increment earned. And at the time, the belief was the increment would never exceed half of the total, because another grocery store would come into town to compete. No one ever thought that a chain would buy Canus, and that's what happened.
And I think we were. What do we pay them, what do we pay them about a year?
A hundred and thirty.
So it's well over.
So that times four, take that times four, that's about right.
So well over $2 million in twenty years, you're going to go with that?
Any other questions? Roll call.
Weyland?
Yes.
Kupfer?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
I have one thing before we close the reports.
All right.
Donna had a report in her, something about the water billing, the emails of the water bills, want to go over that for us?
Oh, yeah. With the water bills going out this past month and the due date the end of September, we had a lot of people coming in to pay their bills. So it gave us a great opportunity to advertise our new ability to email the water bills, and we reminded people about the auto draft, no charge. Especially people coming in on the due date, or coming in a few days after. You could have avoided the late charges, use the auto draft. With that push, we got seventy-seven people to sign up for the email, and thirty-three people to sign up for the auto draft. That brings our auto draft residents to a total of 181 residents. I'm really confident with the ability to advertise this on our new Facebook page. We're going to reach a lot of people who are completely unaware of this. A lot of our residents get their information via social media, and I think that's really going to be a big push. So most of the people that we talked to, very excited about it, really happy that we're doing it. So I was really pleased.
Thank you for signing me up.
Yes.
That is my report.
Roll call.
That's right, I forgot, I'm trustee Basil. Consider a motion accepting the audit for fiscal year 2016-17. Matt?
Baron? Baron, yep.
From Lotterback, out of the village. Village's auditing firm will be at the meeting to present the audit and management letter and discuss any questions or concerns you may have.
All right. Yeah, one minute. Give me two. One minute for each. I'm Matt Baron, the partner at Lotterback, and then oversaw your audit. As did it last year, I'm going to go over this at a pretty high level for you, and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask them at any point in time. So two main documents I'm going to go over tonight are the audit report, the thicker of the two documents, and then the management letter. So I'm going to start with the audit report itself. Kind of flip through pages along the way to show the highlight, there was certain pages I really wanted to point out. So about three pages or four or five pages in, it is this page, it's got the Lotterback name and letterhead on it. This is the opinion page, we gave the village an unmodified opinion. Again, this year, it's the highest opinion that we give. Basically, we're saying the numbers in here are what they say they are, and the audit report is in compliance with all government accounting standards. Two pages after that is the management discussion analysis, so this will be the spot to go to read what happened to the village during the year in a narrative, in a high level summary. So it's time to be going over that within your report, or within my presentation, I'm going to flip past this section. So there, see at the bottom, it says MDNA one, there's MDNA two, flip past MDNA twelve, and we can get to the true pages three and four. On pages three and four, it looks like this, statement of net position. So what this is, it's the, what I call the government-wide financial statement. So it's the summary of all your funds together on full accrual accounting. That means on page three, you see the capital assets, so your long-term assets, and then on page four, your long-term debt. So what do you guys care about? At the bottom is your net position. In total, across all of your governmental funds, we're at $18 million. When you take out your capital asset number, we're about $1 million of true restricted unrestricted fund balance. In total, we ended up decreasing this year by about $225,000, and that had to do with the depreciation of your capital assets. What also happened this year is we had a restatement this year, this is going to, go ahead, I'm going to go ahead and talk about this one letter that we provided as well. That capital asset policy that was implemented this year, it ended up, you know, we did a full-scale scrub of the capital assets to make sure everything was in line with the new capital asset policy. Ultimately, this created a restatement within your governmental activities for your capital assets. It was about $371,000 decrease of taking off assets, and your business type, your water sewer, about $2.3 million. Bob, it said, wanted me to make sure I talked about, there's this one letter that we have to give any time a restatement happens within the financial statements. We have to do the SaaS 115 letter, and it talked about material weakness. Us as a firm, think this language is much too harsh and don't really agree with it, but it's something we have to do as part of our audit requirements, so.
It really wasn't preventable, was it?
Right.
It just has to be. We adopted a capital asset policy, and as a result, we went on that depreciation schedule.
Yep. And that letter is typically just an internal letter, it's not usually like the management letter, and this is the more public letter. It's just something we have to provide you, and what we have to do for our internal documentation, also provide you a copy of that letter. Like I said, you don't really have material weakness, it's just language that we have to get. One of the significant things that happened that relates to this, with your government-wide financials, your bonds, you refunded your 2009 bonds. And in total, with that refunding, you had a net decrease of your payments across the debt, the period of the debt of $87,000. So good refunding that happened. Looking forward from there, let's get to page seven. Now we're back to your normal fund level accounting, what, you know, gets presented to you on a more monthly basis without all that long-term stuff on there. In total, across all of your funds, fund balance is $1.2 million. The main fund I'm going to talk about is your general fund, had $667,000 at the end of the year. So how do we deal with this before page nine? On page nine, your income statement, in total, you can see across all of your funds, the third line up from the bottom is total increase of $78,000. General fund, your main driving fund, had a total increase of $54,000. Revenues were consistent with budget, expenses were slightly below budget, the expenditures were controlled. Fund balance at the end of the year was about 29% of total expenses, so good fund balance, and obviously everything going up as possible for the year. Go forward from there to page 11, get back to full accrual accounting with your business type funds, your water and sewer is the one I'm going to talk about. Here, it's combined on this page, on page 11, where I actually want to take us is all the way back to page sixty. Six, yeah, six zero, page sixty. On page sixty is where it gets shown the split between what's water and what's sewer. So in total, across these two funds, we had a total fund balance of $9.3 million unrestricted, once you take out your capital assets and related debt, at $569,000. When you look at what that specifically is for water and for sewer, water is significantly higher, it's $632,000. Sewer is at a negative $62,000 for that unrestricted amount of fund balance. So how do we do this year? Let's go forward to page sixty-one. On page sixty-one, third line up from the bottom, you can see a total net decrease of $380,000. Ultimately, all the revenues for both water and sewer came in basically consistent with budget. The significant change this year is with the sewer fund, there was engineering fees this year, about $500,000 for the wastewater treatment plant that happened. Which ultimately, being expensed through this year, caused that $408,000 net decrease this year.
We borrowed $352 from the bank for that.
Yeah. So that's ultimately what has resulted, like caused the negative fund balance on the one side, and then the decrease this year. Revenue had a net increase, or water had a net increase of $27,000. Any questions about the audit report itself? Okay, open all the management letter. Our management letter is broken up into two parts. One, current recommendations for any new management letter comments that come up in this year. And then the second part is the prior recommendations. So every management letter comment we've given in the past, we show again with an update on its status, whether it's been implemented or not. So everything is transparent in what's going on. So as you can see, there was one current recommendation, it's kind of more an informational topic, GAZB 7475. It's going to be another accounting standard that's coming up today, it's going to impact your audit report in two years. It basically has to do with other post-employment benefits, so what happened with pensions, where we had to put that extra liability on the books for I R F before for unfunded, it has to do with other post-employment benefits. So we'll be helping out to make sure this thing gets implemented properly in two years is what it's.
The only post-employment benefit liability that the village would have is that we agreed to pay for half of an employee's health insurance from age sixty-two to sixty-five. If that employee has twenty-five or thirty more years of service.
Twenty-eight.
What is it?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, so you know.
Oh, yeah.
It's what we call the old bourbon boozy rule. So that, to me, would be the only.
Yeah.
A placebo liability that we would have, and it should be easily calculated without hiring an actuary.
Yeah, hopefully, we'll be able to figure out, like, this is all coming up in two years, the language that we can do that'll have to discuss immaterial type, that this is not really going to be a thing for you guys.
Or the village board could just rescind that policy and be done with it. And then there would be no post-employment benefits offered, of course, buddy, you don't like that, but.
I think you should lower it.
Yeah. That's something we can discuss in the group down the road, we have two years, exactly.
Yes, we have, 2019 is when this thing comes into play.
And I know how many employees and the age and they're like the service, it's not a significant number, I don't think, right? It's only half of the employee's health premium for maximum of three years.
Okay. All right, so hopefully we can figure out something at that point in time, of what to say to get through this standard. All right, so then from four, there were eight prior recommendations last year, so the management accounts from the year before. Four of which were implemented, having to do with the bankrupt, the capital asset policy, the interfund balance, and the public benefit levy, all four of those were implemented. The four remaining had to do with the restricted bank accounts, so we were talking about the ribbon of hope, asset forfeiture, all those different accounts having their activity recorded within the books. And then also with the youth commission, Fourth of July, those as well. Having those reconciled, everything going through.
They're what we consider offline.
Correct.
Offline.
Yes. And as your auditor saying offline, offletter is, this is not a, not a topic we're supposed to say. Second one is the Bob Barber comment that we'll just be giving each year with how we budget. So him and I, we discuss it, how you put it together, how I, how we recommend it to happen, so it just is what it is. Next one, personnel file organization.
My magic wand.
Bob Barber got it. Personnel file organization is a well review of the items that were within the personnel files. We have the best practices set up for those, what we expect to see in those files. And then the last one being funds that were budgeted. There were three funds that went over budget this year, it's comment number seven, joint fuel, Fourth of July, measurement, debt service, none of which are too significant of dollars, it's more informational that we need to tell you about. It's kind of an automatic review that we have to do with the auditors, is to see which funds go over budget, put it within the audit report, and notify the board. And that is the management letter. Have any questions?
Just on the joint fuel over to what we do every year, is we just budget a number in and a number out.
Yeah.
And that's what it is, because it's an internal service fund. Fourth of July, same thing, we appropriate a number in and a number out, apparently appropriated too low, $1.60 over. It's a lot more successful, I guess, than what was appropriate. Debt service, hmm, we must have incurred some debt.
Probably had to do with the fees surrounding the refunding. That would be my guess.
I'd like to make a motion accepting the audit for this year 2016-17.
Motion number four, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, any questions? Roll call.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kupfer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
See you next year.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for everything, for your hard work for the audit prep, appreciate it. It was a harder time over here out here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Have a good night.
Night.
Steve first, Charlie.
Consider our question from Lighthouse Builders to extend the deadline for the payment of tap-in fees through the village's deferred payment incentive. As an incentive, the village defers payment of tap-in fees totaling $6,432 from time of building permit to the time of issuance of CO, certificate of occupancy, or a period of one year, whichever comes first. Lighthouse Builders has not been able to sell some of their units, and the one-year deadline is passing. They're requesting relief, they're not here, though. So I guess the question is, what do we do about this? Do we waive it, do we get rid of it? If there is a penalty, what would it be? What our actions would we take to enforce a penalty if we were to institute one? So I guess, Bob, my first question is, what course of action do we have if they do not pay?
Well, one course of action that you have is you nullify the building permit, but then you have a structure that can't be sold or CO'd until the building permit is renewed. And I don't know if that's the best course of action to take, because you want these homes to be completed and sold. These homes are just, these homes are ready for sale, they just don't have a buyer. So they're sitting there waiting for a buyer. Once they have a buyer, they call us for a final inspection and a CO, then we go in and do that, then they pay their tap-in fees, and the buyer closes on the home. Here, there is no buyer, the market is not great. And I guess you could fine them, you could add interest penalties to it after one year, that might be a fair way to go. But if we want to be home builder friendly, I don't know if you really want to do that. Maybe you just want to waive that one year and just say a time of seal. Eventually, the house is going to be sold and fees will be paid. Eventually, that'll happen. A brand-new house sitting there is going to have to be sold at some point in time.
Which subdivision is this one?
Most of them, yeah, there's a list of them in here, most of them were Nantucket Cold is where we had the issue. Old Top is building in there right now, and Lighthouse Builders is the other one that's small. Just a further explanation, Lighthouse came in this morning and asked to be taken off the agenda, because he said he was going in tomorrow for payment. So that's why the discussion is in general, not necessarily about Lighthouse right now. Correct.
Just a quick question or a little bit, Mr., so our builders, because of this, are they building houses without having someone interested or buying the home first? Were these pre-built?
These are spec houses. Yeah, a lot of them, they'll build spec houses, they'll get them started, stuff like that, they'll have a basic footprint of the house, and the house will be built. A lot of times, it's to spur interest to where before decisions on final features such as color of tile, or color of paint, or color of cabinets, stuff like that can still be picked out by an owner. And then a lot of times, they'll just keep them going and all the way through, and just list them as a spec house. My first initial thought on this is, you know, I'm four and seven, so I don't think it would be, being an anti-builder, if you did institute some sort of fee for being late on it. I don't know how anyone could possibly think you're non-builder friendly when you're giving them a year of sixty, almost $6,500 in fees that typically most villages last for at the issuance of a building permit. You're already carrying them on that $6,500 for a year. School district doesn't do it, fire district doesn't do it, they ask for their money upfront. School district doesn't do it, fire district doesn't do it, they ask for their money upfront. And, and I would be willing to carry them further beyond a year at that point, but I think there would need to be some sort of fee attached with it. You know, if it's a ten percent or, or something like that, that if they need to extend beyond a year. I don't think it's something you can implement on any of them that are out there now because it wasn't in the case. But I think we should look into having some sort of language drafted to where when they do come and they pick up their building permit, that something is, is signed in an agreement that, yes, that you have one year to pay it. And when that year comes, if you haven't been issued a C O for the property, that you either pay up on that tap-in fee at that time, or you can carry it until the C O is issued, but there'll be, there'll be a, a fee for us to continue to carry you on that, whether it's ten percent or whatever. I mean, I think that's something you can discuss moving forward. But I, I mean, before we do that, I mean, what is everyone else's thoughts on that?
So we're the only entity that doesn't get the money in print, basically?
When you look at the, Bobby can explain it, but there's, there's fees that are impact fees. Such as the school district and fire district, and those are collected at time of the issuance of the building permit. The fire district fees are actually paid by the developer at time of class. So the fire district's paid off. The school district gets approximately thirty-five hundred per unit as a cash and lieu of land fee, which the developer defers to builders, and they pay that at the time of building permit. The tap-in fee typically in the past was always paid at the time of building permit, but in that downturn, I believe we began this program, ooh, two or three years ago, where we said we would defer the tap-in fees, but you had to pay them within a year at time of seal. And when the year came this year on some of these permits, I just didn't have any regulatory teeth to make them pay. I mean, you can't squeeze one out of a permit that doesn't have any money. So if I shut the, the project down, it doesn't do any good to, to get that house sold. So we're gonna catch twenty-two.
I, I absolutely don't think shutting the project down is, is that, but if, and like I said, I don't think there's anything you can do to anything that's out there, but I think we, we need to look at, at this and, and say, look, here, here it is. You know, if it's sixty-four, thirty-two, I mean, you can come up with a, a flat dollar amount, the tap-in fees become seventy-five hundred, or seventy-two fifty, or, I mean, whatever. I mean, we can discuss that further, but I, I, I don't see it as being different than any other bill that you get. You know, you have a bill, you have a year to pay it. If you don't pay it, what happens?
Yeah.
What do we do with our water bills? Right? I mean, there's a late fee if you don't pay your water bill on time. It's not much different. So I, I mean, I'm for it, but I think it's something that would need to be drafted by the attorney, so if we wanna, I mean, if, if the rest of the board is in favor of that, I, I mean.
That would solve that problem.
And, and you're not shutting anybody down or anything, but you know what? I mean, the fact of the matter is, is if you're gonna carry somebody, I mean, you're, you're fronting them the sixty-four hundred and thirty-two dollars. I don't think it's unreasonable if they need a year and six months rather than a year to ask for more.
I just wanted to apply to anything existing.
Anything existing that's out there, you have no teeth on it. It's already been issued, and I mean, we didn't have anything in writing as to any form of penalty, or what the repercussions would be if you went beyond a year. So, but I just think moving forward, you, you, you do that if they choose.
So we, we could amend the ordinance and amend the agreement that we make them sign when they come in. That's, that's, would you think ten percent per year, or just ten percent? What would you do there?
I just, I just come up with a number to make it easy. If you don't pay it by this day.
Yeah.
Like the water bill, you know, if I don't pay it by this day.
This is my, yeah, this is what it is.
Tomorrow I'll pay him this much.
Yeah, I, I mean, I mean, I'm still a quick math, I mean.
You're probably talking around seventy-five hundred.
Yeah, we call it, you say.
So even if his permit is failed for three years, he only pays the ten percent penalty?
You're looking at twelve point seven one if you say seventy-two fifty. You say seventy-five hundred, it's a sixteen percent penalty, which isn't.
For one year.
It's not outrageous. It's a seventy-five hundred.
I'd have to split that between water and sewer, because at sixty-four, thirty-two, there's a water and sewer.
So you, you live.
Is that the consensus?
I would use the same percentage of, of it as that's water and sewer is the increase in the fee. You split it that way.
Got it. The next one's kind of tied into it. I think you made, basically just made a decision.
I mean, I, I don't, we don't need a, I mean, you're not, I mean, how does that work? I, I guess we just gotta have it, it's a consensus, and we ask the attorney to bring us something in writing, and we can, we can amend it at the next.
Make a motion authorizing the attorney to draft an ordinance stating that.
Okay, so I need to do that in a formal motion, asking the attorney to draft that?
Is this something we want?
That's fine. I mean, the next item is the same ordinance.
Right.
So you could do both at the same time if you wanted, John. The next one's the same thing. No, it's something different. Well, it's in the same ordinance, okay.
Can I make a motion, John, to refer it to attorney?
All right, I'll make a motion to refer this to the attorney to, to draft something based on suggestions that have been made at this meeting.
The seventy-five hundred dollar total cost after year.
Yeah.
Second.
It's a motion, second. Any questions in motion? Brokaw.
Wayman?
Yes.
Coopros?
Yes.
Ms. R.
Yes.
Coopros?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Uh, consider authorizing the drafting of an ordinance extending the deferred tapping fee for the water and sewer credit for the first fifty residential building units or until November first, twenty nineteen, whichever comes first. Do we, would that be covered under that, or by, by doing that?
Well, the, the current ordinance expires November first, along with this tap-in fee incentive. So what, what we would also have to do, if you want to continue the tap-in fee program, we would extend that another two years, and you could extend this two thousand dollar credit another two years. And I think the thinking behind the two years is it allows for each village board, as there is an election, to decide whether they want to continue that. So this two years will go until the next village board seats in two years. But you could place a cap on it, another time restriction on it, add to the units, decrease units, whatever you want to do. As you can see, currently, we didn't hit our goal of fifty. I think we had twenty-one housing starts take advantage of the program. And I believe we only had one builder that was actively marketing that. Is that correct?
That is correct. Castle Town is the only one who is using that to promote sales.
In promotional materials.
The other home buyers come in, and they are shocked, pleasantly shocked, but very surprised that they are receiving two thousand dollars credit on their water bill. They had absolutely not one idea. So, I mean, that obviously didn't sway them to buy a home here in Beecher, but it is a huge perk. You know, they just were completely unaware of it.
Do we know about how many of those starts were Castle Town? Are those twenty-one?
There's a chart in your packet. It's, it's, it's at the address and location of the tenants. And I would say he probably is the most successful, because most of them are on Somerset. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So of the, of the ones you issued that we've granted, several of them are there. Currently, most of them are in Nantucket Cove. They're pending.
So seven of them knew it was coming, and the other?
That's correct.
Fourteen or so were merry Christmas.
But the ones we have outstanding are, are ones that are not in Castle Town. There might be one in Castle Town. But we have eighteen thousand pending and twenty-four thousand pending. Now, if you, I don't understand why the other builders aren't advertising it, but to me, if, when they come in to go talk, they get surprised by word of mouth, that could spread, so there could be another way of advertising it, prevent people buying homes from you.
Yeah, I, I'm definitely for this. I think it's something as simple as, you know, let's, uh, let's reach out to the, the other builders and make sure that they, they are aware of it.
That's what I mean, if, if the builders aren't using this, what's, well, I'm not saying get rid of it, but the, the builders aren't advertising for this, what's the point of having this? Besides a nice surprise when you go here.
Two years ago, we wrote them all a letter via a copy of the ordinance, told them this is.
Did we do that when Oltoff purchased?
Yeah.
And there's been other turnovers, you know, uh, different builders and so on, but when we did it, you know, we thought it would be a great way to stimulate growth, you know?
Yeah, our initial thought was that this would be something to kind of, you know, get that stuff filled, and that this would be a great incentive for the builders and for the people coming here.
Be advertising. I mean, we talk about, so, and like I said, by word of mouth, I think probably is going to be the best thing, and maybe that's something that could be posted on the Facebook page or something like.
Yeah, I, I think the extended deferred tapping is, it's, that, I think is a no-brainer, because that, what, what you're doing there is you're allowing a builder more capital to work with and get the houses going, all right? Before they even dig a hole, then they cough up an additional sixty-five hundred dollars, you're keeping that in their pocket to build the house. And you are still gonna get it. As far as the, the two thousand dollar credit for the, I mean, you got one builder that's definitely doing it. I say you keep rolling, rolling with it, and they extend it, and you just, you, you reach out to those other, those other builders out there, you know, that you got two other ones, Lighthouse and, and Oltoff, and say, reminder, hey, you know, the village board just, you know, agreed to extend this another two years. Please, you know, take this information and, you know, hopefully it helps you sell some houses.
I mean, they, they should be pushing that. That's too grand, unless that you're gonna have to worry about coming to a new home, which everything else you have to pay for.
Absolutely.
And we did initially budget fifty permits until November first. We haven't even hit half of that yet.
Correct.
So, I mean, if the fifty was budgeted, you know, we knew we were gonna do fifty. We've only done twenty-one.
So, all right, so I'll, I'll make a motion authorizing the drafting of ordinance extending the deferred tapping and water and sewer refuse credit for the first fifty residential building permits or until November one, twenty nineteen, whichever comes first. So that fifty counter clicker, whatever you want to call it, starts over, back to zero.
Second.
Motion number four, and there's a second. Any questions? Brokaw.
Meyer?
Yes.
Coopros?
Yes.
Ms. R.
Yes.
Coopros?
Yes.
Wayman?
Yes.
Trustee Cross.
Consider the purchase of portable scales in an amount of eighty-four hundred dollars for truck enforcement. The police department came across this promotion for the purchase of certified portable scales to be used on-site when overweight trucks are pulled over. This amount is not budgeted, but the savings on the new dispatching contract of eight thousand one hundred and sixty, this fiscal year, and the sale of two motorcycles, which is about fourteen hundred.
Yes, Senator.
Uh, can cover the cost. In addition, overweight citations are significant. The police department has two certified truck enforcement officers that are signed on both a day and night shift. The scales are being demonstrated in town this week in our forward provided as to effectiveness. The promotion is for, on the set of scales, only so there's some expediency to this decision. Staff recommends that they be purchased. They will probably pay for themselves within a few years, personally sooner, and as another tool for regulating through truck traffic. These are used from another municipality. They're in good condition. This isn't something you have to purchase every year. Obviously, you need to maintain them. There is a, they need to get certified every year, which is a thousand dollars for the set of four. It's two fifty each one of them. But I think this is a, this is an easy yes. I know since I got on and, you know, I had several conversations with the chief, the truck citations have shot up. I don't have numbers to tell you, but I can almost guarantee they're well over what they did last year. And there's two officers in truck enforcement that now are going with that bills.
Well, portable scales, there's currently three officers that are certified portable scales, so.
And, I mean, days can use them, nights can use them. I've left my house early in the morning, and there's trucks running up and down there all the time. And, yeah, I mean, I just think this is an easy win. It's a good tool for them to use, so we're not trying to, you know, words that are sworn back. If you gotta take them to one Pito or?
Well, probably run into is the overweight trucks have to be weighed, and if we're fortunate, we'd have to go to I fifty-seven northbound or southbound if they're open. They close, they're closed at night periodically during the daytime, which creates a problem for us because we have to have Department of Ag certified scales to weigh trucks on. We can use any Department of Ag scale, but you have to have permission. Those private businesses are not gonna allow that unless you enter an intent agreement. The issue comes down to if their scales are damaged, it puts them out of business, and who pays for the repair of those scales and, and their loss of business during that time? So with the portable scales, it allows for, it allows us to weigh trucks, but what it does is it allows us to weigh the tandem axles, which is where we have to keep them level, and using dummy pads instead of two and dummy pads. So it gives us the ability to, we have a truck enforcement program. The law's changed in twenty-twelve. We went from a designated and non-designated roadway to just one set for everybody. We used to have a seventy-three, two-eighty weight limit on Indian Avenue. It's now eighty thousand pounds. But what we discussed, there, there are certain times of the year that would be definite truck enforcement days, basically from twelve oh one A M. on April first. All portion plates expire March thirty-first at midnight, so all the truck tractor semis, Illinois portion have to be registered, if not, they're in violation. Flatweight plates, July first, all flatweights would be your D plates, your F plates. Those expire at the end of June at midnight, so they become now overweight. So I'm gonna talk to, I want to talk to Todd. We talked about the permit loads, there are certain things about divisible loads, non-divisible. If they're in violation, they basically go back to legal weights, which is eighty thousand pounds, and they're paying a permit because they're heavy already, so those are non-automatic violation. I, I, I will be straight with you, it's two fifty per scale. He did tell you that. That's each year to have them certified. If, and it's, it's an enforcement tool. I, I, I don't want to come in here and talk about this as a revenue generator. That's the wrong way to look at it. But it gives my officers the ability to do a good job at that location. If I have an officer that makes it stop, they're out of service at least an hour, hour and a half as we travel to Pito. We have to travel slow because the trucker's not in a hurry to get there to make sure we don't lose them and make sure they show up. Then we have to wait for bond. There's a couple of things we have to do. So we're out of service anywhere from an hour to two hours, if that's a good day, over, back. You have the scales in town, the officer can weigh. You're done weighing within fifteen minutes paperwork, the officer's possibly back on the street in thirty minutes, issuing an I bond and completing this job. So it cuts, it cuts the investment time down and allows the officers to, to, the ones that are certified to focus on truck enforcement. And as you know, there's times out here, anywhere between twenty-five, thirty-three percent of your traffic is truck traffic. You have a heavily traveled roadway with the intermodal that may be built, creature truck traffic's gonna increase. Will County, the, 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 I mean, you're an inland port, you're, you're going nowhere except up on, on truck traffic. Myself, we've talked about this before the last week when the chief passed away, and I think it's a good program to commit to, but you folks have to make that decision.
We, we did have for the last week, and we were supposed to have a week, a trial week. Obviously, with the events that happened, the trial of those scales sort of went by the wayside. So again, I mean, I think this is an easy one. This is a good tool for our officers to have and an open benefit to town in the long run. I'd like to make a motion to purchase portable scales in an amount of eighty-four hundred dollars.
Second.
Or, and there was a second, I think, right?
Yes.
Any questions in motion? Brokaw.
Wayman?
Yes.
Coopros?
Yes.
Ms. R.
Yes.
Coopros?
Yes.
Meyer?
Miners?
Yes.
Any old business?
Just one item, uh, we will discuss the strategic plan and dates for strategic planning at the next village board meeting. I'm still missing two. I don't know who they are, but I'm missing two. So, yeah, time's running out. But I am missing two, I think the mayor might be one of them, I'm not sure. But I need them back, all right? Here's what's gonna happen, we're gonna compile the data, we'll present to you the data, and schedule dates to begin, but I want you to have some time to digest the data that other trustees have submitted on their surveys. Do you have your list of top ten? We're gonna, we're gonna show you everybody's top ten first, so you can start thinking about the other people's top tens, you know, and start framing your questions and comments regarding other people's top ten priorities. So, I hope to have that done for the next board meeting, gotta get those two in, so we can start compiling. And then we'll set dates at the next board meeting, okay? For strategic planning. That's all right.
And a new business, um, because of the recent turn, events that we've had within the village, I think it's important that I share my thoughts on how to start looking for a replacement for the chief, I think it's important for the police department. We have a union contract coming up, which will start probably after the first of the year, we have holidays coming up, and I think it's important that the police department knows, uh, who, as soon as possible, their replacement could be. What I would like to do is I would like to hire an outside firm that handles everything from the start to the end, make a recommendation to me on three possible candidates, uh, after an assessment center, and then from those three candidates, I would choose a chief of police to present to you for appointment. Anybody can apply, anybody that can be certified by the, uh, law enforcement training board. I have a concern, first, I think it's the best way to do it, but I also have a concern that some of the people that I know from my past may apply, and I'd be willing to put twenty dollars down, fifty dollars down, will apply. I have a concern that trustee Kraus, some people that he may know from the past may want to hire, and there are people, I'm sure there's a lot of police officers in town, some of them may also want to, uh, apply. I think it's the best way to do it, just have an independent company come in and do it. I have contacted one company, they've given us like three different options, uh, we have a ballpark price, we know what we're talking about. We are waiting for another price, so that we can give you an option, two different options of what price, I can tell you we're gonna be in and around no more than probably about twelve thousand dollars, that's for the worst case scenario. But again, this one company gave us three different options, that we could do some things, they could do it all, I would prefer they do it all. And hopefully at the next board meeting, uh, I will present to you two companies that, and give my suggestion of which, which one I think we should pick. All I'm asking for tonight is, at least, do you agree with that plan?
What, what do they do, what do they do for twelve?
Okay, what they do is, number one, they, if, again, depending on what option, let's go to the worst-case scenario, we have them do it all. We try to tell them what sort of work they're for, like what area, okay, and then they pick what advertisement they're going to choose by our suggestions. From there, they do the application process, they have their own application process, they do their own interviews, they do an assessment center, after the interviews, they pick based on qualifications that we present to them, uh, what we like. The assessment center, if, if you don't know what it is, it's basically a scenario-type thing. You walk in a door, you sit down, and you say, okay, chief, you have five people that walked off sick, you need six people on the street, and you have nobody else to work, what are you gonna do? And then they have to sit there, and they have to begin to, like it wasn't, I'm getting on the work there. Then, from there, um, they would make their recommendation to us, you know, and then from those applications, we would go from there, or even from the assessment center, he's suggesting, what was it, well, this one company is suggesting five people go to the assessment center?
Five to seven.
Yeah, five to seven, and from the assessment center, he would present three applications to us.
Now, with the assessment center, you guys would be, there would be some level of involvement, you guys might have lunch with the candidates, or be on a panel and meet the candidates, they just aren't gonna know you're trustees, you're on the panel.
They also, they usually, the ones I've been through, they'll interview a police officer, someone from supervisor staff, they interview, 'cause they want, they need to know what we're looking for.
Correct, that's correct.
But what timeframe are you looking for, I mean, 'cause that's, we're talking a lengthy process here.
I would like to have, I don't know, without suggesting this to the company, I would like to have a new chief to be appointed, the second meeting in January.
Can they do that, do we know?
I have to answer.
Okay.
That is Michael, I'm just telling you what my thoughts are.
You're running into the holiday process.
And that's, that's, I've been through, not interviewing for a chief, but when we're looking for chiefs, I've been through a couple processes, and they're not, they're not quick. That's what I know, I mean, it's, we're talking months' process here.
Yeah, I have not actually talked timeframe, all I talked, when I talked to this one company, I said, I feel there is a sense of urgency being able to be on this, uh, to find a replacement, telling them for the reasons I said before, Bobby, disagree with you, I don't think we have any involvement, so.
The ones I've been involved in, the awardment.
If we don't go this route, what's our alternative?
I simply go through an interview process and make a recommendation. We can come up with other ways of doing it, such as, we could do everything this company's going to do. I don't think we should do that, I think we should be totally independent, and let an independent source come in here and do there. We can do what they did years ago, which I think they said failed miserably.
We, that last day, last year.
Three residents from the town, uh, did the interviews?
Yes, we had a panel from town. It ended up kind of, everyone had their own candidate that they were, and we had to reach a consensus candidate, that's how that happened.
And I, again, I think you, a much thorough search, application process, but we don't like a company that has to be, be verified.
And I understand the urgency, but you have to remember this decision, you may have to live with for fifteen years, twenty years, so gotta make the right decision.
Well, we need to live for at least four, or three and a half.
Correct, that's a narrative.
It's not a, it's not a, this isn't a judgeship, it's not a point of the life, I mean, if, we will give them a contract, obviously, like any other chief, but it's four years, and or something else happens.
By law, you can't carry the contract, go work for a new chief.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's not, it's not.
Hoping again, by, I don't depend Detroit company coming in, discussing it, and then there's a possibility that, again, if there's more than three candidates, could there be a second interview by citizens, or something like that, do we go down more, do we present it as a possibility, let's get to that point first and see what happens.
So if, you're saying five to seven, if we hypothetically have fifteen people applying, how do they weed that down to five to seven before they do their interview?
There's, there's.
They do their interview.
Well, there's a screening process, they screen the applications, or the qualifications that fit what we want, then there's the written interrogatories, where they have to answer a bunch of questions about their personal life, their professional life, how they would handle situations, maybe a hundred and twenty-day action plan, that's sometimes involved in them, questionnaire, then they would, from that questionnaire, they would get it down to five to seven. And then those five to seven go through assessment.
Is this outside company, or anywhere in this process, will they consider, or will, will there be psychologicals?
That's our choice.
For testing all the graphs?
Yeah, that's our choice, yeah, we haven't gotten there. All I'm trying to do is get the process rolling, so.
I just wanna know that that's a choice.
Well, firstly, I don't think it's a choice, I think it's a mandate, that's my thought.
It could be part of the screening process.
I agree.
Suppose. How, how far would this search reach? Depends on what we say. Again, my thought, only my thought, when you put the word out there, they're not gonna reject any application, you could get an application from the east coast or west coast, unless we put a, the applicant must be within twenty-five miles of the village. I don't agree with that, because that may limit your getting an excellent person, because he goes twenty-seven miles out of the village. We could, and, and it's only my thought, is that I think I would look at a candidate fairer role if he was more familiar with, I'll call it the South suburbs, rather than somebody who is from Virginia. That is my thought, that if, if I had three candidates in front of me, and let's say they were all equal, this one candidate might stand out more to me, because he was more familiar with the area than this candidate, if they were all on an equal plate. So that's something that we have to decide, and how far I'll be wanting to go in the search, but to be honest with you, I don't think I'm gonna limit the search, I'm gonna look at the, my thought is we limit the advertising, but we'll take an application from anybody.
How do they advertise it? Just basically go out to the police organizations, or?
There's all kinds of places you can advertise for that.
But they, they do some of the associations too, the police chief association, stuff like that, they have the mailers, newsletters.
It, it will be national, you can limit your search, but people know about it nationwide.
It goes out nationwide.
Yeah.
It's like, great, I mean, I don't know, we'll get it, but you'll get it from east, west coast, everywhere.
And it's possible you might have somebody that was originally from the South suburbs, moved somewhere else for a few years, and now they wanna come back, so you might get one of those candidates.
And that's why I don't, I don't think I wanna limit, because that's possible.
I mean, I, I'm on the fence about this, I'd like more information about it before go either way, I understand what you're saying, but I don't know, I just, I, I, yeah, I mean, I don't know where we're gonna get from, what state, and, I mean, even if they recommend, if there are three recommendations, I mean, we might look at them and say, we don't like any one of them. I mean, that's our prerogative, and then what do we do?
It's also my appointment.
Correct.
You might not like any three of them.
Yeah, so I was to say, suppose you don't like.
If there was, if, okay, if that, I thought about that, if there was a case where they present three in front of me, and I don't care for any three of them, is it possible, uh, what are the options, start over?
That's what I'm thinking.
Well, no, they, they still have a ranking past three.
They should drink, don't those three move on to the next three, next three, and if there's a point saying, you know what, we're starting to lessen.
Periodary.
Yeah, we're less, lessening our, our, our standards, if you wanna call it that, we're hiring somebody that isn't really qualified, then we may have to start all over, it's possible.
Yeah, we, we can ask from them to rank more than three, if we ask for the list of seven, the list of ten, I mean, it's, they tailor it to what we ask for.
Yeah, I'm, 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 sorry, I'm the fence.
Okay, will we have seven counts, or?
Okay, is there a motion, John?
Some?
Motion made.
Second.
Second. Brokaw.
Meyer?
Yes.
Pros?
Yes. Yes.
The pros?
Yes.
Whaling?
Yes.